We're ready when you are, sir.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Cook?
Here.
And President Byrne.
Here. Would everybody please stand at the flag? I pledge allegiance. Do the flag. Okay, is there any motion to appoint trustee Cook as president pro tem?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint trustee Cook to be the president pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Your roll call.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. First item of business is the citizens wishing to address the board. Other than something that's on our agenda, is there anyone that wants to talk to us about any issue? Okay, in that case, under the village president's report, a couple of things. First of all, unfortunately Vernon Hills has been in the news recently due to a very tragic incident. Chief, do you want to bring us up to date, please?
Thank you, Mr. President, and just wanted to take a moment to pass on, on behalf of the village, to the Romero family, that we released updated information this afternoon. Unfortunately, what we were all hoping for didn't come to fruition. And sadly, we found Brisa Romero today in the retention pond. That we found her car yesterday. As many know, the men and women of the Vernon Hills Police Department partnered with the Carpentersville Police Department early on in this investigation and had really worked tirelessly every day and night in hopes of safely finding her. A lot of information came together early yesterday morning. And we were joined with our partners from the Countryside Fire Protection District. And just really want to extend a lot of gratitude to the partnership of the community because a lot of people were out there in earnest, working to do their best on this. And when we got the information, Countryside Fire Protection District called on their partners through the MABUS system. And those men and women have been working tirelessly the last 24 hours to try and bring peace to this family and recover Brisa with dignity. This is an active, ongoing investigation that will continue. And we're working closely now with the coroner's office. And but, you know, it's important that the community knows that, you know, we did our best in this case. And it's a sad outcome. And but we just extend our condolences. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Speaking of condolences, the village's prosecutor for many, many years, Hal Weiner, passed recently. He was the only prosecutor this village has ever had over 60 years. Actually started prosecuting cases before we had a police department. Back when it was just some guys working part-time, coming from other departments before we had our own department. And he picked up on that they had no place apparently to send their tickets. And he, you know, said, well, send them my way. And he started taking care of it. And then he and his firm have been our prosecutors ever since. System manager, Patrul, you want to?
Yes, sir. You know, well said. If you go to the Vernon Hills Police Department, you'll see that they have an honor wall of uniforms. And some of the original uniforms are on display, which include the olive drab pants and the khaki shirts. And those were because, you know, there wasn't a police department back in the day. And they would use part-timers from Deerfield and Libertyville to come up. And as you mentioned, when they wrote those first tickets, they didn't know how to get them through the court system. And that's how Hal became involved in representing the village. It's remarkable when you think about his tenure and his service for this community. From the inception of the Vernon Hills Police Department to back when we only had part-time officers through the professionalized accredited department that the chief leads today. It's just an amazing tenure of service that Hal has had. And during this period, he has mentored every single officer from the inception of the department through 2020. So when we heard of his passing, the alumni and the current officers were just saddened because he personally mentored every single one of us in courtroom testimony, rules of evidence, and, you know, just how to be a better person. I think the chief would echo that as well. Hal had a rich legacy of service. He served in World War II. He's got remarkable, remarkable family, great sons that continue to represent us, Hal and Dave Weiner. Evan does the adjudication here. Dave does the prosecution in the courts. And, you know, it was just an honor to be part of their services. The chief and the department provided a color guard or an honor guard. And it was just a beautiful service. So a lot of us were touched by, you know, Hal throughout his life. We just can't say enough about him. But here's what I'm going to say on behalf of the family. His legacy not only lives on in his sons, but it lives on in every single police officer he mentored and touched and all the good that they do each day and their efforts to provide a more just society. So thanks for the opportunity to say that. He was just a really great man.
Chief, if you'd like to?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I completely, completely agree with everything John just said. And when I came to the village about seven years ago, one of my first meetings was with Hal and his sons, David and Evan. And I, in short order, realized that village prosecution wasn't going to be a concern of a new chief in this community. It just really put me at ease that they were professional. They had the best interest of the community and justice. And they were going to serve us well. And the men and women of this department have all got stories about some lesson they've probably learned from Hal along the way. And when he retired, it took a COVID pandemic to finally get him to decide he was done practicing law. But he really left us in good hands and we continue to be that way. But I think we just feel really lucky to have known him. And he was a gem of a person. He left a mark on the village, so thank you.
Yeah, good. Mayor, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, the half of his sons has done a commendable job. 60 years is a bit more than a career. It's like almost, it's a lifetime of service to the village. So and he's a veteran on top of that. So Hal, you'll be missed. God rest your soul.
Yeah, he will be missed. He was a great person. Okay. Then we also, in the past week or so, lost one of our telecommunicators, Lynn Erickson. Chief, did you want to address that for us, please?
Yes, sir. Again, it's kind of a terrible theme here this evening to deliver bad news. But one of our long-serving employees, Lynn Marie Erickson, passed away peacefully at home after her last workday. She worked on Thanksgiving. She wasn't feeling good. But to her credit, she didn't want to call in sick on a holiday and make someone else work that. And she went home and suffered an ailment that took her life way too young. She was 57 years old. So the mayor has signed a proclamation that I read to her family at the service this last Friday. And it'd be my honor to share that with the village now.
Yes, if you would, please.
All right, so this is a proclamation in honor and remembrance of Lynn Marie Erickson, Vernon Hills Police Department, Vernon Hills, Lake County, Illinois. Whereas Lynn Marie Erickson entered into public service on July 1st, 1984, working as a desk officer for the Buffalo Grove Police Department. In over 15 years of service to that agency, Lynn worked a variety of positions, including police records clerk, police information management system supervisor, information system manager, and ultimately, police records division supervisor. And whereas Lynn began her employment with the village of Vernon Hills on April 17th, 2000, Lynn served the villages of Vernon Hills, Libertyville, and Lincolnshire as a 911 operator and police dispatcher for more than 23 years. Lynn was a calm and reassuring voice to distressed residents often experiencing their worst days. Further, Lynn was a trusted partner to officers in the field. Her calm and steady voice on the radio enabled officers to act confidently and decisively as they provided assistance to the community. And whereas Lynn received numerous recognitions throughout her career for efforts leading to exceptional public and law enforcement service. During her tenure, multiple village residents and officials wrote the department to express their sincere gratitude for Lynn's work. And she was definitely directly credited for coordinating a Vernon Hills Police Department response that resulted in a safe capture of a serial sexual predator. And whereas Lynn was a dear friend and trusted mentor to her public safety partners throughout her years, Lynn cared deeply for each member of her department and worked to support them in their personal and professional endeavors. Lynn's generosity of spirit came without exception, without expectation of return, and defines her legacy. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the president of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, County of Lake, extend to Lynn Marie Erickson their gratitude and thanks for her 39 years of dedicated public service. Be it further proclaimed that we express our deepest sympathy to the Erickson family for their loss. While Lynn may be gone, her legacy will live on in good works of her surviving friends and family. Pass and approve this 12th day of December, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Yeah, it was a significant loss. Worked here a lot of years. Good person. And that's one of the toughest jobs on the planet, dispatching. It takes a very unique person to be able to handle that kind of a situation on a regular basis. It's a tough job. So we thank her and our condolences to her family. And tonight is all about long tenure with the village. On a more positive note, let's go in a different direction here. This is a proclamation in recognition of Kathy Zerillo. Would you like to come up here, please, ma'am? This, too, is for a long term of service. For 30 years of service as a volunteer and chair for Summer Celebration and Vernon Hills Days in the village of Vernon Hills, Lake County, Illinois. Kathy Zerillo has served as a volunteer and chair of the Summer Celebration Vernon Hills Days Committee for 30 years. Kathy served in a variety of roles, including ticket sales, managing children's entertainment, volunteer coordinator, hospitality. And for the last 10 years, Kathy serves as the committee chair for this event. Vernon Hills Days has included traditional attractions to include a carnival, beer tent, food, music, fireworks, and fun. In recent years, a charitable component has been included, providing an opportunity for fundraising for individuals and organizations in need. Vernon Hills Days was initially a smaller, community-based event. Vernon Hills Days has grown in popularity and become known as one of the best summer festivals in Lake County. Over the course of Kathy's tenure as the event chair, Vernon Hills Days has entertained hundreds of thousands of people. Vernon Hills Days has had national musical artists and groups, including Rick Springfield, Charlie Daniels, Elvis Day and the Nights, Little Richard Band, Eddie Money, Casey and the Sunshine Band, Jefferson Starship, and many more. This event has become the ideal venue for friends and family to gather, for residents new and old to connect, and a special moment to enjoy summer and celebrate community in a place where a lifetime of wonderful memories have been made. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Roger L. Byrne and the Board of Trustees do hereby express our sincerest appreciation to Kathy Zerillo for her 30 years of service to the community, for her leadership as event chair, and her efforts of ensuring Vernon Hills Days remains one of Lake County's premier community events dated this 12th day of December, 2023.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Kathy. That's all right, I understood.
Thank you. Kathy, you want to say a few things?
I tried.
I was.
Are you ready? Because first of all, thank you very much for this. It was very nice. And it's been my pleasure to do this. I've enjoyed it all these years. I've sucked in a lot of my family to do this. And it is a great event. And it's hard to walk away, I will say that. I've really enjoyed doing this all these years. So thank you for allowing us, me, to be in charge of this great event. We've had our trials and tribulations, but everything always works out in the end. You know, we've had bad weather. We've had all kinds of things thrown our way. And it's hard for me to walk away. But I do appreciate the opportunity that you guys have given me to be the leader of this great group of people that give a lot of their time to do this event. And I think they enjoy it as well.
Well, and let me add, I think it speaks volumes. One of the things we talked about this past summer is the number of second-generation people who's, you know, who are.
Yeah.
Following in the footsteps and working on the committee. It's, you know, I think that speaks volumes about, you know, your leadership and the other people that have been involved.
I think it's in great hands, and I think they'll do a great job going forward. And I'll still be around. I'll be watching them. But thank you very much. It's very kind.
Thank you. Thank you for all the service. Appreciate it. Mayor, you want to add something?
Yeah. Hey, Kathy, thank you for your time, your leadership, and your ability to make tough decisions under tough situations. And, you know, it's not a light undertaking because we have so many people that come through there every year from town and surrounding areas that, you know, it's, you're to be defended for keeping your sanity and always taking good care of your, you know, your volunteers and Public Works and the Police Department and everybody else that, you know, assists in putting on this great event. So Kathy, congratulations for a job well done.
Thank you, Roger. And do I have your fool that I have any sanity left?
Okay.
All right. Before we move on to the actual business, we will give anybody who would like to depart now be an opportunity. Or you can stay for a while. It's up to you folks. But yeah, we always like to give the opportunity. Okay. Nobody on staff has a speaking part tonight on anything? No? Okay, all right. Then next item would be the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through P?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions on any items? Okay, hearing none, then roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. There's no unfinished business, correct? Then under new business, approval and passage of ordinance 2023-122 and ordinance authorizing the approval to waive the competitive bidding process for the purchase of TASER 10 Conducted Electrical Weapons and a total of 62-month expenditure not to exceed $208,930 for the purchase of the TASER, these CEW units from Axon Enterprises.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, first of all, introduce Commander Rob Caselli. Rob is our principal use-of-force supervisor, oversees all of our training when it comes to weapon systems and training officers and the application of force. Mike, if you could, could you maybe shrink that down so we could have both images on the screen? Why we're here tonight is because we just wanted to explain and perhaps justify to the board a request for some funding that was not budgeted this year. The department for a number of years now have been using a TASER series called TASER 7. That's the image that you see on the screen there. Earlier this year, the TASER 10 was released. And it's been on the forefront of our mind for a couple of years now, being aware of some shortcomings in the performance of the TASER 7. And TASER 10 significantly changes that technology. I was able to first see this equipment in April. In October, I was able to fire it. We've had other staff be able to evaluate it. And Commander Caselli and I were able to meet with a national use-of-force expert, not affiliated with Axon, and really pick his brain. After further evaluation, I think it's appropriate for us to move forward. But understand that this is a more expensive product. It is kind of mid-contract of our current T-7. And I wouldn't be making that request if I didn't think it was warranted. So I'm going to ask Commander Caselli just to share a little bit about how this system differs and perhaps just educate some members of the board about why we carry tasers at all and kind of how they work.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. It's important to know that some of the key technical data concerning tasers are that they require two probes, which are in these two bays right here, to connect with the surface of the offender. And the farther those probes are away, the more effective a TASER can be. We currently have the TASER T-7, as chief said earlier. And these are designed to carry a couple different kinds of cartridges. The new TASER 10 has 10 cartridges as opposed to maximum of two, depending on whether we have the different types of cartridges in there. The TASER 10 has increased accuracy. It has increased standoff distance because of the individual cartridges. And it allows for 10 follow-up shots as opposed to the one shot that you're getting with this one. What's that, sir? That is correct. So this one has, as you're firing, it fires two cartridges out. This one only fires one. So this gives you the ability to independently target each TASER cartridge, which means it's going to be more accurate naturally. And it also has increased distance as opposed to the one or two cartridges we would have in here. We currently carry the close-quarters ones, which allows us to only fire within 10 feet. You would have to switch cartridges out to the long-distance ones. And that would be in excess from 12 feet to 25 feet, effectively. So we only have, in fact, one shot to utilize in close-quarter situations, which is where most of the actions get, pardon me, most of the interactions with offenders is going to be taking place. With this one, you, every single trigger pull is an independent target, like I said earlier. And you can have the spread be what you want it to be. So the ideal would be in 12 inches. Want to say anything else, sir?
Yeah, let me emphasize, the current system, one trigger pull sends two probes. And there's two lasers that the officer has to aim. And to be effective, they have to aim both those lasers at a safe spot of the body and land both probes simultaneously to have a closed circuit for the weapon to work. The change in what's been described as a game changer in the new technology is instead of having to aim two lasers and land two probes, now the operator has one laser, lands one probe, moves the laser to another safe target area of the body, and presses a trigger again to fire another probe. And if necessary, does that again until there is a connection. There needs to be a closed circuit for what's called NMI, which is basically the neuromuscular incapacitation of the skeletal muscles. So a person stops their aggressive attacking behavior or perhaps they're injuring themselves and they'll stop them. So all previous versions of the tasers, which came out in the 1980s, and we've been carrying them for about 15 years, have had different generations of them. They've all relied on the basic technology of two probes landing, connecting, closing a circuit to incapacitate someone's resistance. This is the first time that Axon has developed and come out with a system where it really simplifies things. And when Rob has evaluated the failures that we've experienced, it's almost always been a case where one of the two probes is not connecting. And so we don't have a closed circuit, and therefore it's not effective. And we use tasers in the field. We discharge tasers on average about twice a year. But they can be lifesaving applications. And when they don't work, it concerns us. And I think, Rob, you also said that we've noticed those same kind of failures in training. And how, explain to the board a little bit about the type of training we do with this.
So we have several different types of training that we utilize. PowerPoint presentations, and they discuss de-escalation and when we should and should not utilize the TASER. And then we also implement a, it's called a TASER suit. And that allows our officers to effectively utilize cartridges in a training scenario. And it makes it very realistic by shooting people with that, or the TASER suit.
Who wears a TASER suit?
Fortunately, an instructor, sometimes me, so.
Oftentimes, oftentimes it's Rob.
Yes.
It allows an instructor to actually role-play the role of the offender to escalate and de-escalate the actions, to train an officer when it's appropriate to deploy a TASER and when it's not. And then to watch and see if they're doing it appropriately. And the suit, although it's a training cartridge, a suit allows them to determine whether or not they would have had NMI incapacitation to safely overcome someone's resistance. So again, this is something that we've been looking at in the last couple of years from Rob, from the rest of his team, realizing we've got some shortcomings. There's always been a failure rate when it comes to a system like this. They've never been 100%. But you want a tool that you can rely on to work effectively in these high-risk environments. And frankly, the officers' feedback to us is that they've been losing, you know, confidence. And when Axon came out with this, like I said, it's been about six months of really asking the hard questions, trying to figure it out. And I became convinced last month when I had a chance to, I mean, one of the predominant experts in the country that I really trust, we were able to sit down and. we were able to sit down and, and he convinced me, this isn't something we should wait on. So, there is a backlog of these. The ordinance is asking for us to enter into a 62-month agreement. It pretty much breaks our current agreement. But fortunately, we haven't spent the money in this year's budget. We would have spent $24,000 for the contract for this year for the TASER-7s as an ongoing expense. And keep in mind, the expense isn't just for the weapons, but it's all of the cartridges that we carry, all of the training cartridges, all of the training certification. And importantly, there's a whole backend to this system. So, Commander Caselli is able to audit and download these systems and have a full accreditation of how these tools are used. So, essentially, instead of spending $24,000 this year to enter into the agreement, we would apply that to the new contract. The first-year contract cost is $57,000. And then, every year going forward, it's somewhere between $35,000 and $40,000 a year for the TASER-10 system. So, it's basically an unbudgeted amount of $33,000. As reported in the board packet, we do anticipate a less lethal grant opportunity coming from the state. We're watching closely for that. I was hoping it's going to be out by the time we gave this report. I'm somewhat confident that we'll be able to recoup some of these funds. I don't, we have no assurance that that will happen. But if we, whether we do or not, I would report back to the board the status of this budget line, but I'm pretty confident we'll be able to absorb this one way or another in the department's operating budget. So, with that, that's my request, but certainly stand ready to answer any questions or clarify anything we can.
Trustee Takaoka.
Okay, so competitive bidding, is Axon the only company that makes this product?
Yes, sir. They're certainly the only company that makes tasers. And TASER is really the only real electronic control weapon in the industry. There's been a couple of companies that have tried to come up and be competitors, but nobody that has the backing of the scientific development to make sure that there's a safety factor involved in these things. So, there are no competitors.
So, there's no competitor, then? How would, why would you need a competitive bid anyway, right? You'd just buy it direct from the company there? You can't get a better price anywhere, can you?
No, we cannot buy it from anywhere else. This is just our regulate, you know? Our purchasing requirements would say that if we're going to spend this kind of money, we would competitively bid it. If it's not applicable, then we have to ask to waive competitive bidding.
Okay.
I think I said that right, sir.
I agree.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Trustee Markwart.
Yes, I believe too that, again, it's only used technically for our police force twice because verbally, you're going to be tased, is the factor. But if I understand too with this device, penetration, one of the problems is jackets, winter time. I believe this 10-series penetrates a heavier jacket. And then, again, one of the other factors is the length of it. This goes out to 20 or 25 feet. And I think people understand something that an individual with a knife at 25 or 23 feet, I believe is the correct, is an officer could be knifed within that distance.
Sure.
So, this is a very, an item that I believe our force needs.
Thank you, Trustee Markwart. I'd like to clarify just something you said is, the new system actually has a range of up to 45 feet. And so, instead of, the problem with the current system is that the farther away the target is, which is somewhat safe, right? The wider the spread gets of the probes. When you're only firing one probe at a time, you can reach out there, keep more distance, more reaction time. So, it has a better way to more safely deploy it. Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Yeah, Trustee Forster.
Is maintenance included in these? Do these get maintained and checked for being up to par a certain amount of times a year or whatever?
Correct. This price includes a warranty for it. The staff actually does downloads. How frequently do we do the downloads?
Every time we change our batteries, so, once a month.
Yeah. So, once a month, there's a download. It runs diagnostics. They're quite, you know, it's a computer, basically, in this weapon system that self-checks. And importantly, like no other, no other weapon system a police officer's ever carried, the audit trail that gets kept in this weapon system enables us to determine just exactly when it was turned on, how long it was turned on for, whether or not it was discharged. So, if someone were to make a claim that an officer inappropriately used that, this audit trail is a really bulletproof lockdown system of determining just how it was used. So, there's no other weapon system. Police officers have been carrying batons for centuries, and there's no way of knowing how, if they were used. This enables us to do that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Chief, what was the original length of the contract for the T-7s? Looks like you're just like doing like a swap upgrade.
Yeah, we're about halfway through the original contract, sir.
So, they're like 10 years, then?
No, no. The original contract went through from '22 to '27. The term on that, the contract we're under right now, was 72 months. And so, we are about halfway through that and would like to, we're not even halfway through that.
I got you. So, the 57,000 is for the current year contract plus the upgrade for the units, basically? And then, you're just paying more per year annually for the contract, right?
That's correct. We're going to spend a little more every year. And they are discounting the price of them if we order them now, but we are paying somewhat of a penalty, so to speak, because we're getting out of the current contract with the T-7s.
They won't waive that penalty? They won't waive that penalty?
They, our staff, Chris and, I'm sorry, Rob and his counterpart, Chris, Commander Burmaster, have been negotiating them. This price is a negotiated price from what they first offered.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, then, we need to take action on this tonight, correct? Okay, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-122?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we're doing the next two items separately, correct? Even though they're same project?
Yes.
Okay. Second item is approval and passage of ordinance 2023-129, an ordinance granting variation from Exhibit E zoning section O parking ordinance for 639 Continental Executive RPUD to reduce the required parking for the proposed Heathrow Scientific Building to be located at 440 Fairway Drive.
Thank you. Heathrow Scientific is the owner of the property at 440 Fairway. They have commenced the demolition of the existing office building on that property. As you may recall, there was a concept discussion for a speculative building on this property. The property was subsequently sold to Heathrow Scientific because the concept review and the building that Heathrow Scientific was proposing were substantially similar and addressed the major concern of the committee of the hall, which had been who would occupy the speculative building. I made the determination that it could proceed on to the Planning and Zoning Commission due to its appearance and the size being so similar. Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing. The reason for the public hearing is a parking variation request. Heathrow Scientific is proposing a site plan that would have 63 parking stalls on it. There's some landbank parking stalls. I'll get into that in a moment. That 63 parking stalls is below the minimum requirement for the building, which is 107 stalls. The reason for the variation is the demand of Heathrow Scientific is so far below what the code requires. They do prefer to leave as much open space as possible and landbank the additional parking. The building is 112,000-square-foot building, 13,000 square feet, and northeast corner would be an office area. It is a combination therefore of office and warehousing. I'll introduce them in a moment so they can talk about the specifics of the operation. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the variation as well as the associated site plan and architectural approval. There were no significant conditions in the site plan, the site plan ordinance suggested by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission did have some questions on the landbanking and the mechanics of how landbanking would work. The recommendation on the parking variation has a condition. Conditional variations are somewhat unusual, but in this case, Planning and Zoning Commission's suggestion is that the petitioner provide a landbank parking agreement that spells out what the triggers would be for constructing the landbank parking. The village staff would review that and concur with the triggers, and then they would record it against the property so that it's clear under what circumstances the additional parking would need to be constructed. The landbank parking, once constructed, would actually exceed the code requirement, but in order to not construct it, they do require this variation. With that, I would actually like to bring representatives of the project forward to just briefly go through the operation and answer any questions that you have. This is presented as a new business item. There are two ordinances related to this development. If there are questions or concerns, these ordinances would need to be modified. If the consensus is that they're generally acceptable, we could modify them prior to signature.
And this first item is for the parking we also have tonight. The other item is for the actual...
Correct. Separated as two different votes, two different ordinances.
Site plan, landscaping, and architectural plans is the next item? Yeah, okay. Hi, you can identify yourselves for the record, please? Yeah?
Shirley. I'm Jim Waldenberg, the owner of Heathrow Scientific.
Okay.
Joe Arons with Premier Design and Build Builder.
Hey, Robbie Anderson, Civil Engineer, Spaceco Incorporated.
So, your slides are a condensed version of your... Your slides are available if you'd like to just give a brief overview of what Heathrow does, since you weren't part of the original concept presentation.
Absolutely, thank you. We are a global manufacturer of laboratory equipment and supplies that are used by research scientists and clinical labs. We sell to distributors all over the world. About half our sales are outside the U.S., mainly in Europe and Asia, and the other half are inside the U.S. And the products get used in university settings, pharmaceutical companies, hospitals, and labs all over the country. And what we do here in Vernon Hills is we design, develop, and engineer the products with our engineering product development team, and then we service our customers with this centralized distribution logistics center and consolidate shipments to them from here. We've been here since 2000. I'm very happy to employ a bunch of people that live in Vernon Hills and neighboring towns, and we are very appreciative of the community. It's a fantastic place to do business. You know, the team, your staff is really wonderful to work with, and we appreciate that very much. I guess we employ about 45 people, and the parking that we're putting in is about two and a half times what we use on an average day because of the combination of remote work and having people that don't live here as well as employees. A bunch of our people live outstate.
And then, the principle of landbanking parking is it's land that won't be developed as parking, but if it's needed later on, it can be added to the parking, right?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
So, we, to clear up what landbanking parking means.
And as a long-term real estate investor in Vernon Hills and other places, I want to make sure that the building can withstand us moving someplace else and entertain a different tenant who might have different parking requirements. That's one reason why I would insist on having, you know, an appropriate amount of parking potential in the building. It's just whether I want to build it now when it's just going to sit there and get plowed all winter and not get used. And this is an elevation of our building.
Well, we'll get to that. Do you want to get to that with the...
Sure. I put them both together in the same presentation. It kind of blurs it, but there are two separate votes requested, two separate ordinances.
Do you want us to finish the idea on parking and then go to the other one before we do the rest of the presentation? Or do you want to do the whole presentation?
Whatever the board would like to do.
Okay, we'll go ahead, and then we'll come back and, okay. So, go ahead with the presentation then.
Yeah, I'm not sure how many more slides are, but this is a sort of elevation of our building. We're extremely excited to move into this building. It's going to have, you know, expanded research and development facility as well as a fitness room, and it's going to be a two-story office. It'll be, you know, state-of-the-art distribution center. We only have four docks right now, which oftentimes is a big problem for us. So, it'll have plenty of dock space for receiving and shipping and reduce the chokeholds that we have right now in our current facility. And we're just super excited about it. Super excited to be working with Premier Design and Build, Spaceco, and Cornerstone Architects. It's a fantastic development team. As you guys know, you work with them all the time.
Now, the second one down is the east elevation. That's the one that will face Fairway Drive, correct?
Yes, exactly. Exactly right. The north, yeah, northeast, south, and west.
Comments or questions from the board on the elevations we're looking at? Or anything about like the landscape plan or any of the... Because they were all in the packet. Comments or questions?
Where's this stuff manufactured?
Sorry?
Where do you manufacture this?
We manufacture, we mainly do development here.
Oh, right.
We do a little bit of kitting and some labeling, but all the manufacture takes place elsewhere, more and more in Lake County and other manufacturing facilities, but also in China and other countries outside the U.S.
Everything at the Planning and Zoning was approved unanimously by P&amp;G, correct?
That's correct. No major concerns either on the variation or the site plan and appearance side, with the exception of just exactly how the landbanking would be triggered. And there's a condition in the ordinance that's drafted that would address that. They would be required to submit a landbank parking agreement. We would review it, ensure that the triggers are appropriate, and then they would record it against the property.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Because this is fairly close to the, like you said, it's fairly close to the original concept we saw, yes, so it's... Okay, so then, in that case, if there's no, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-129 regarding the parking?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second? If there are no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. The other ordinance regarding the same thing is the approval and passage of ordinance 2023-130, an ordinance granting preliminary and final site plan, landscape plan, and architectural plan, approval for a new warehouse office building Heathrow Scientific at 440 Fairway Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, a second. Any other comments or questions from any of the board? Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to address to this?
No, it looks like a nice, nice building in that particular...
Okay.
Welcome again to Vernon Hills.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, you're just down the street, right?
Yes, yeah, we're in Lakeview.
Yeah, okay. All right, then, if there are no other comments or questions, a roll call on this one.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to do business here. Appreciate it.
And thank you for your kind contribution to the staff. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Um, any other new business or communications? Anybody have anything they wish to share under communications? Okay. Um, then in that case, we are going to have closed session tonight for land acquisition, but we'll do that motion at the end of committee, the whole, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then in that case, if there, nobody has any other communications, I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn the board meeting and go to committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. No opposition. So we are adjourned and we will go to committee of the whole.
Yeah, okay. Would you like to call the, uh, committee of the whole meeting? Is there a motion to, uh, appoint, uh, Trustee Cook as President Pro Tim?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be the Mayor Pro Tim for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next item is a concept review for Dom's Kitchen and Market, six hundred Town Line Road.
Thank you. Uh, the staff has been working with representatives of, uh, Centennial, uh, and Dom's Kitchen and Market on a, a concept for a, uh, a unique grocery, uh, which would be located, uh, in a portion of the mall property that's just to the west of Sleep Number. Uh, there's a project related to this potential concept review, uh, that's been under permit, uh, permit review with the village for, for some time now, uh, which would shift the roadway, uh, north, creating, uh, a parcel to the west of Sleep Number that would be large enough to accommodate, uh, a building of this size. Uh, the, the building would be a twenty-four thousand square foot grocery. Uh, it would be visible on four sides. So one of the, one of the issues that we've been working through with the development team on this project is, uh, how to hide the loading dock. Uh, it is going to be fully screened in northeast corner, uh, with a, with roof over the, the loading dock itself, so it would be, uh, basically incorporated into the building. Um, there's a slight change from, uh, the, the staff memo on this. Uh, the, some of the other issues that we've been working with, uh, relate to the overall development of the mall. Pedestrian connectivity, uh, to the new mixed-use building, pedestrian connectivity to the, to the, uh, mall campus itself, uh, and just confirming that the, uh, the traffic, uh, the traffic can, uh, can be accommodated. Uh, there are exit drives, uh, in proximity to this site. Uh, we've been talking to the, to the development team for a little while now about, uh, a, updating the traffic study to just ensure that the exit capacity, uh, of this proposed development can be handled, uh, at, at those, uh, those exit drives. Um, tonight is a concept presentation review. Uh, at the end, we are just looking for feedback that the development team can incorporate into their technical reviews at middle. Um, as I said, we've been working with this on some ti- for some time now, and they've already, uh, made a pretty substantial number of changes through the discussions with us. Um, just real quick, before I introduce them, uh, there are, uh, suggestions for discussion. Uh, the pedestrian connectivity, as I've mentioned, has been discussed with them, uh, but if there are any particular comments from the committee, we, uh, we'd certainly like to, to have the feedback to help the development team. Uh, exit drive capacities, I noted, uh, would be part of technical review. The alcohol service, uh, in, in our meetings with, uh, the representatives of the business, uh, they've, uh, made sure to point out that there is a somewhat unique concept for alcohol service, uh, to have package sales as well as onsite consumption. Uh, and I'll, I'll have them go into the details of it, but based on the description, I don't believe there is an existing liquor, uh, license class that would apply to, to the use as they described it. Uh, so they are looking for feedback, uh, before they move forward, just to make sure that there's, uh, general, uh, consensus that that, that type of service would be acceptable. Uh, and then the last comment on here I, I had, uh, mentioned was the loading dock, and they, they have already resolved that issue. Um, with that, I would like to have them come forward and, uh, present the concept.
Thank you, Director Jennings. Uh, good evening. My name is Ryan Martin, Site Civil Engineer with Kimley Horn. I'd like to start by thanking the committee for allowing us to bring this proposal to you and for, for concept consideration, but also, uh, Director Jennings mentioned we've been working with staff. Would like to thank them as well for their efforts in providing some guidance before we, we come here and throughout. Um, it's been a great working relationship and, and happy to continue that. Um, if you could go to the next slide, we're going to go have a quick overview. Um, so team introductions with me today, uh, Sam Whitebread with Centennial Real Estate, uh, Mike Mallon with Draper and Kramer here representing Dom's, Mark, uh, Kitchen and Market, and also Peter Theodore with, uh, CT Architects. So our, our presentation today will, um, Sam will, will start with, um, how, how Dom sorts of, uh, fits into the campus, um, and then Mike Mallon will, will give a brief overview of, of Dom's Market operations and, and some considerations there. Um, I will touch a little bit on the site, and then, um, Peter will, um, be able to showcase his, his excellent renderings, uh, and elevations for the architecture. So with that, I'll kick it to Sam here. Oh, and I'm sorry, real quick. Also here is, um, Natalie Moore and Daniel Grove with Kimley Horn, who have extensive knowledge on the Hawthorne Mall redevelopment and are available for questions if needed. Sam?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Byrne, trustees and staff for, uh, for your time and attention tonight. Uh, my name's Sam Whitebread with the Vice President of Development with Centennial Real Estate. Uh, as you know, we are the, uh, the owner and operator of the Hathor- Hawthorne Mall Campus. Uh, tonight, we're joined here with our business partners from Dom's Kitchen and Market. Uh, Dom's is a, is an exciting new concept of the, in the world of unique grocery, as, as Andrew said, and grocery and more, and, uh, we're, we're very thrilled to have them, uh, here with us tonight to present the concept to you. Um, I'd like to introduce Mike Mallon, who represents the brand, and then followed by Peter Theodore, who is the, uh, the architect, and, uh, Mike can share with you a more detailed overview of, uh, this unique, uh, opportunity.
Thank you very much, Sam. Uh, good evening, President, trustee, staff, as well as residents of Vernon Hills. As Sam mentioned, my name is Mike Mallon, and I am with, uh, Draper and Kramer. I am a consultant as well as a broker for Dom's Kitchen and Market. On behalf of the Dom's team, I can't tell you how excited we are to be here this evening. We've had a chance for the last six months to work with Sam and the rest of the team at Centennial to bring forth what we think is a very unique and exciting grocery concept to Vernon Hills. I don't know how many of the board have had a chance to visit Dom's Kitchen and Market. I'm seeing some heads shaking.
I, I want to, Lincoln Park.
You've been to the Lincoln Park? We currently have two stores, Lincoln Park, which you attended, it sounds like, as well as our second store, which opened up in Old Town, and we're on our way to our third store, which will be in River North. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and extend an invitation certainly to the entire board, as well as to everybody else in the room, that we'd love to have you come down and visit our Lincoln Park store. Come on down. We'd love to walk the store with you. We'd like to talk about what is a very interesting and exciting concept, and possibly have you, give you a chance to even enjoy some of the things that we, that we offer at the store. With that, this proposed store will be our first suburban Dom's Kitchen and Market and will be special to, is special to our team. You may recall that Dominix was in Vernon Hills for a number of years, just immediately west of the proposed location and west along Town Line. Also, a number of our team were also involved in the development of the Mariano's, which was one of the first stores here in the Chicagoland area.
Yes, we were, I think the second one, right behind Arlington Heights.
That's, that's correct. Yes. Right on Mil- Milwaukee. We believe that Dom's will bring something special to the market. Our customers will not only enjoy the nuances of the carefully curated market, but they will enjoy the brew, Dom's coffee, as well as our wine bar, as well as its quick and easy chef-prepared meals. We look forward to getting to know you more, certainly over the next six months, as we go through the entitlement process, and I really wish you would take me up on my offer to come down and visit our stores in the Chicagoland area. We do look forward to bringing Dom's to Vernon Hills, hopefully in late twenty twenty-five or early twenty-six. Be here if you have any specific questions regarding Dom's. Thank you.
Uh, would you mind going back one slide, please? Just want to give, give your bearings and, and to where this proposal is located. Um, it's the south side of, of the Hawthorne Mall redevelopment, um, just north of Town Line Road. As Director Jennings mentioned, there is, um, it's, it's, uh, Ring Road kind of currently is about centerline of the building. Um, we're proposing to relocate that roadway to the north as Mall Drive. Some of what you see here is, is existing. Some of it's kind of more future, uh, particularly to the north. That Phase Two is, is not yet, um, part of our development plans, but, um, potentially a future opportunity there. Um, so I just want to give you an opportunity to see kind of how this mall, this, the, the grocer fits into the rest of the campus. You could go to the next slide, please. Uh, location is between Sleep Number on the east and, oh, I, I could be doing it. Okay. Sorry about that. Um, so Sleep Number on the east, and, um, on the west is, is access to, to the mall, um, across the street from the, the Town Line, uh, Commons, uh, existing, um, development. So the site will have, uh, Dom's will be located, uh, east with parking on the west and south. Um, the, the, Peter will get into the elevations, but the western, uh, face is, is the main entrance facing that parking.
All of that parking on the west is part of this project, correct?
Exactly. Correct. Um, the, the northeast, uh, has a truck dock, um, that will be, um, accessed from the site. It can be, it will be detached from the, the Mall Drive to the north, so we can, we can separate the vehicular traffic there from, from the truck dock, um, access point there. Um, I don't believe I have any further comments, so with that, I'll, I'll let, um, let Peter talk in architecture, but we're available for questions if there's specific site comments.
Good evening. My name is Peter Theodore, and I was involved in the Mariano's in Vernon Hills, and I'm very excited to be here. I live right down the road on Route sixty in Lake Forest, and I spend most of my taxpayer dollars in Vernon Hills, so I'm super excited to be here. I know that, uh, out of the twenty thousand and four customers that will visit this store on a weekly basis, those four extra ones will be my wife and kids. And, uh, this is a really a unique opportunity to bring something special into the market. When we talk about groceries and prepared foods, it's not like the traditional grocery store. It's specialty groceries tailored to the community and special needs, and then when you look at pairing that up with specialty foods and prepared meals, uh, you literally can go into the store and get home-cooked meals that you've never, ever seen before. That's why when Mike says you need to see the stores, when you go down there and you see the love and attention put into the handcrafted meals, you'll understand why this is such a success story and why people will migrate from Lake Forest and other communities into your community to visit this store. As we look at the architecture of this building, we paid strict attention to its adjacency to Route sixty, how it melts together with Melody Farms and the other retail architecture up and down the corridor, and we use a expansive amount of glass on all the elevations to accentuate not only the view from Route sixty, but from the entry and onto the mall itself. I'm going to go back to this real quick to show that we also pair up outdoor seating with the store, and that outdoor seating is directly adjacent to the store so that on the nice days that you can go outside, take your meals out there, spend some time, uh, on this, on the premise, and literally walk to that outdoor seating, which is integrated into the store and outside the store. Inside the store, we have an atrium that couples up nicely with that vernacular. So getting back to the architecture, we, originally it came in with a plank-style architecture. I felt that using a white masonry brick with black accent windows and awnings would be more complimentary and consistent with what's going on in the corridor and the other architecture found in Melody Farms, and we, again, we think that there's a harmony that exists between all the architecture and the, the themes that you have going on that marries it up nicely. And here again, around, uh, right off Route sixty, you can see how that architecture invites you into the, the premises, and, uh, it really comes alive both during the day and nighttime as light, uh, emanates from the building. And again, uh, this is, shows you an extension of how it relates to the mall, how there's an incorporation of tables and chairs, and then that bleeds into the outdoor seating adjacent to it in the parking lot. This is the interior of the store, and you can see that there's special attention given to the atrium that brings the indoors in. You can see that everything down to the textures, the materials, the quality of the materials, it's all integrated into the presentation. You see the charcuterie up in the lo- upper left-hand corner. You see the grill in the lower right-hand corner, left-hand corner, and then you see the atrium with the tree piercing through the skylight. We prepared black and white elevations, again, to show you in a more descriptive, uh, precise way what is occurring. As Andrew alluded to, uh, we made, uh, special attention as it relates to the loading dock. The loading docks are indented into the building so that it's fully screened from Route sixty, from the mall, and, uh, virtually from el- every elevation. And I wanted to go over just some basic facts about the store. We're parked at over five per thousand. We have a hundred and fifty-five parking spaces, which we think is generous for this, this type of store. It's consistent with what we have in other locations. In fact, it exceeds it. It's a single-story building with a maximum height of about twenty-eight feet. Uh, the pinnacle at the corner exceeds that by a couple of feet, but generally speaking, the building's averages twenty-eight feet in height. It, um, is four-sided architecture. The hours of operation are approximately from six to ten. We will, will hire approximately a hundred and fifty people, and there's a great opportunity to have job fairs and hire from the community, and we pride ourselves in that. Uh, this community actually takes a lot of pride in involving the neighbors in participating in these type of activities, so we think that we'll have an easy time drawing people into this. Our garbage and the frequency occurs two or three times a week. It's not as intensive as the Whole Foods or other users. It's, it's less intense, and we try to coordinate those hours so that they don't conflict with the mall operations or our operation in general. And as I said, we're anticipating on an average twenty thousand customers a week. Uh, we'd love to see those numbers. We think we can achieve them, and, um, we really do believe that this will be a great addition to the community, and we're looking forward to sharing this with you.
What was that number?
Twenty thousand. It seems like a big number, and it, it is. Uh, it's, I, I think it's representative of how successful the brand has been, but I think that when you look at the mall and the relationship of other users, it, it really melts together great with the community. And that's really all I have to say tonight. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them for you. Thank you very much.
Is that painted brick?
No, no. It'll be...
What is that?
Pure white brick. And I'm going to go one step further. I'm going to be specking Medusa white cement and grout. Uh, I want to have a really nice, clean-looking building, uh, one that's going to weather well over time and one that, uh, really captures the spirit of the store.
I feel like you guys would request a, like, an outdoor seating too, right?
Yes.
I didn't notice that. Where would you...
I'm going to show this to you in the landscaping plan. If you look up into the corner, it's, there's heavily landscaped area.
How big would you say that is?
I'd say it's, uh, about a thousand square feet, maybe a little bit less.
And then you'd have seating on the sidewalk out front?
Correct. So if you, yeah, and that's very observant of you. I created a, a very expansive sidewalk in the front. I, I didn't want to have your tr- uh, uh, traditional short sidewalk. I wanted the inside and the outside to kind of blend out and, and bring that attention to the sidewalk and to the seating area. So there's a very generous sidewalk in front of the building. And then you can see that we've heavily landscaped. We're going to exceed the landscaping ordinance. We think that landscaping is... So if you, and that's very observant of you. I created a very expansive sidewalk in the front. I didn't want to have your traditional short sidewalk. I wanted the inside and the outside to kind of blend out and bring that attention to the sidewalk and to the seating area. So there's a very generous sidewalk in front of the building. And then you can see that we've heavily landscaped. We're going to exceed the landscaping ordinance. We think that landscaping is complimentary to the architecture. It provides shade and relief, and it really enhances the outdoor seating as well.
I got a question.
Sure.
I get how this works in River North and Old Town, 100%. Are you expecting like, I mean, driving people here to eat, shop? I mean, I see the produce, I'm on your website. So Mike, do I want to come here to shop for produce, fish, meat? Are you getting higher-quality meat than, say, Whole Foods versus, you know, Dorflers where I go in Buffalo Grove? That's from a shopping perspective. But then from an eating perspective, are you going to be relying on a lunch crowd? Or, I mean, because you got, yeah.
Those are great questions.
No, I'm just curious. I think the concept is awesome, but I'm just trying to see. I get where in Chicago, 100%, like Foxtrot, you know, that sort of concept.
It's a great question. So it's actually, there's a lot of things going on in the store, from the morning brew.
So I'm going there for coffee.
And the coffee's amazing. I mean, you would think Starbucks and their saturation.
100% agree, but that's drive-through people. That's a convenience thing. So now, if your coffee's that good, I'm going to drive and park and walk in.
And people actually do. People line up in the morning, and we create.
In Chicago.
Well, they'll do that here, too. What we think will happen is we create an environment where people are encouraged to come in, relax, and enjoy the environment. As I showed you in these pictures, what sets us apart is that people will come in with their laptops. People will sit down, and we encourage them to, we actually create a lounge area so that they can have their brew, enjoy their, have their meetings, do whatever they might do in the morning. But we want them to stay. We also pair up local produce with locally sourced vendors. We rotate our produce according to the seasons. When we talk about food and a culinary experience, it's constantly changing, it's constantly evolving. We have chefs on staff. So when we look at the more generic formulas for food stores and Whole Foods, they do a really good job, but they're not as nimble and they're not as flexible. This store is more boutique. And this store will modify and adapt according to the needs of the community. So as you kind of uniquely identified, the Chicago crowd might be different than the Vernon Hills crowd. However, as we adapt and figure out what the needs and wants of the communities are, we need to be flexible. And having that flexibility allows us to tailor our needs to yours.
And Trusty Tackle, one of the, when this name first came up, was shortly after the Lincoln Park store opened. And with the approximately 800 apartments within a half a mile here, this would fit into the.
Northwood where my daughter lives is a different demographic than what's moving into.
No, I understand, but the feeling was that this might be a really good, especially with the success we had with the Mariano's and that, so.
Sure, but, okay.
Could I maybe just?
Your price point's definitely going to be higher than, you know, right? Because the way, I'm just going to tell you, look, I'm maybe, I'm someone you'd want to attract, because the way I shop, I go to Whole Foods for some things, I'll go to Trader Joe's, I'll go to Mariano's, right? So it's, I'm just.
You're not alone out there. The one thing that we experienced in the grocery industry since the recession, there used to be something here in Chicago that was called customer loyalty. In other words, you know, you grew up a Cubs fan, you grew up a White Sox fan, you grew up a Dominics fan, you grew up a Jewel fan. Those days are long, long gone. People shop around. Retail has changed so much over the last 10 years, in particular in the grocery store industry. It's all about the experience now. You know, I've been asked to try to define what this is, and I've spent a lot of time in the grocery sector. And I think the way that I described this concept, it's a grocery runt. It's a combination grocery and restaurant. That's really what it is. There's a reason why it's a kitchen and then a market. That went into the actual thinking, because originally, this was going to be Dom's Market and Kitchen. But the focus wanted to be on that unique specialty feature that Peter went ahead and shared with you. But you're right, this is different than Lincoln Park. It's certainly different than Old Town. And that's why we've been very, very selective in terms of what suburban market did we want to go to. One of the things that I was engaged with before Doms even opened up was to figure out how we roll this chain out. And really, what is the primary trade area? What are the right demographics? What's the right mix, the competition? And in particular, the Vernon Hills area scored extremely high. And then that was only supported by the amount of requests that we got online from your residents that said, "We want a Doms in Vernon Hills." So all of that went into, if you will, the decision.
How many people would like, trigger you to? Like, how many people would have to make that request? I'm just curious.
No, no, it's.
It's a great idea, but I'm just.
I would say that in terms of suburban market, it was by far the strongest suburban market that we got requests from. And again, I don't know if the hundreds or whatnot, but it demonstrated to us, based on the previous success that Bob Mariano had with Doms and then Mariano's, this was certainly a market that could support Doms. And then to be able to partner up with Centennial in regards to this environment they're creating, live, work, play, it had a lot of feeling then of more of the urban market. So all of that came into play, and that's really why we're here this evening. Because we're not about to, you know, invest $19 million in a project if we don't think it's going to work. And we really do, and we're pretty excited about it.
I think it's a great idea, I'm just curious.
And I guarantee you're going to be one of our loyalty customers moving forward. Hopefully.
I am loyal.
No, I was one of the citizens requesting this, believe me. I like the, I like the concept, I thought it was.
But did you do it 100 times?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
No.
It is Chicago.
Not that jealous. Not that jealous. I may have talked to him several times about it, but. Other comments or questions from the board? Trusty Shank?
Yeah. Sam, this might be a question for you. Phase Two, we'll butt up against that, pretty much the residential?
Yes.
So the timeframe on if everything goes well with Doms and goes through P&amp;Z and then Phase Two, what kind of timeframe does Phase Two, like, before you start?
I think as we look at that timeframe in context with the Doms, the Doms is a smaller building, a smaller site, 24,000-square-foot building. I think that could be constructed, as Mike said, you know, late '25. So we would see that coming online earlier than the Phase Two. The Phase Two is every bit of 24 months of vertical construction preceded by six months of site work and development. So you would see Doms come online first and a Phase Two development soon thereafter.
And was it Ring Road right there?
The Ring Road realign.
Who's realigning that, Doms or?
We are going to do it as part of this Doms project.
So you will be, so Centennial will be realigning that road and?
Other questions or concerns from the board? Mayor, you have anything you want to add to this?
No, I think it'd be a great addition to the.
Okay. I think it'll do very well here.
Yeah, I do, too. I do, too. Can I see how the dock is going to be shielded from the?
All right. If you look at those dash lines in the upper right-hand corner of the building, you're actually indented into the building. So that's a notch out in the building. So the trucks actually pull into the building. They're covered. It's not closed off, but they're actually under a covered roof in that indentation. And we paid special attention to bringing those trucks in off of Mall Drive into the loading dock and then back onto Mall Drive. So there's no commingling of the trucks with the pedestrian traffic flow as well. So everything was very thoughtful and considerate, and we used the mass of the building to fully screen that view from 60, from the mall, and from the west.
The people who are parking at Sleep Number, aren't they going out? The same entrance that the trucks are coming?
They are. But as I spoke to earlier, our hours of operation, our deliveries are going to occur early in the morning, most likely. There'll be minimal conflicts with the existing outlot building, and we don't get the frequency that you see in a normal grocery store.
Okay. Do they have to, so they have to back, they'll back out? Backing south and then pulling north?
Yeah. I paid special attention to really making that truck maneuver as simple as possible. It's basically pass the store, back up, and then leave the store. So there's no rotation counterclockwise or clockwise around the building, no conflicts with the existing building. There was a lot of time that Kim Lehorn and I spent configuring this building so that we could really separate those. And the one thing I didn't speak to as well is all our trash is going to be within the building. We're not going to have dumpsters and stuff flying around. The outside of the building is all going to be self-contained. So we're very conscientious of how this building functions relative to how the patrons use the building as well. So we kind of separate the utilitarian aspects from the patrons' aspects.
Anything else? Anything from staff?
No, I think. The thing that I just wanted to be sure, leaving the concept review, was the alcohol service. If somebody could just basically describe what you're proposing, just to get any feedback that the committee might have.
As we've chatted with staff a little bit, one of the components that is crucial to the overall operation of the store is the sale as well as the consumption of alcohol on-site. And so what we're proposing is the sale of alcohol within a portion of the store itself and the ability then for customers to be able to enjoy a nice Cabernet or a nice IPA within the store area itself.
And this would be just a, it looked like it was a minor modification to the current, we have some similar.
So the Class J is close. It is tailored specifically to a larger grocery store, and there is a defined area within the grocery store for service. So just the use, the operation that you're requesting, obviously the store is a smaller store, but it wouldn't necessarily be confined to the cafe area, correct?
That's correct. We'd like the ability to be able to have a customer walk around the store with a glass of wine. Again, it goes back to what I mentioned before. It's all about that experience. That's not unlike what some other grocery stores certainly do throughout the Chicago Land area. And that's what functions very, very well for us on our existing two stores.
Okay. Does your merger with Foxtrot affect this in any way? And will it affect?
The merger with Foxtrot is an incredible opportunity. You know, you've got two iconic Chicago-area brands that will be basically partnering up, and you'll see cross-pollinization in terms of goods as well as services between the two. So we're very excited about the merger, and that's something that we've been very involved with over the last six months. And one can only imagine where it'll be from, you know, a year from now. I think there's a lot of synergies that can be enjoyed by both brands moving forward.
Okay. And basically, you're looking for, from us tonight for consensus to move forward?
Consensus to move forward. This is a non-binding review. Just the feedback that they received from the committee would be factored into technical review.
Yes, it'll be time for counsel to do your normal.
Sure. And do you want to poll the board first regarding the concept? Let me just go through this, and then you can poll the board.
Yeah.
So for the petitioners, tonight's approval, if you get that, is a non-binding concept approval. It is not a formal approval. The purpose is for you, as petitioners, to gather input in order for you to move forward through technical review. You will go before planning and zoning. A recommendation will be made, and ultimately, you'll come back before this committee, the whole, and then the village board. Between now and then, as you finalize your plans, the board has the right to further condition or modify its approvals. So with that, Chairman Protam, if you can poll the board as to whether or not.
Yeah.
There is a concept.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
So I get the concept of walking around a store, drinking, or having a glass of wine. What's your thought on that from a law? I mean, you know, people may, I don't know. See that as something that maybe security or some, from their part, needs to be around?
This is an issue that, you know, the board has considered in the past when they've considered these liquor licenses where service can be made and then someone can move out of the observation of the server. So I, you know, I would not be uncomfortable with the board setting some guidance for those serving instructions to an institution like this to make sure that there is a level of oversight to make sure that perhaps one person comes in at the age of 21, and their buddies that are 19 and 20 don't, and the person can't buy three drinks and share with the two. So those are the type of things, but I think some reasonable controls could be outlined and probably instituted by an institution that would give the board the insurance. That would really be my only concern, is the level of supervision that a Basset-trained server has on the people they're serving.
Trusty Markworth?
I believe that Mariano's and Whole Foods, you can have a drink.
I know Whole Foods for sure has a.
And the basket itself that you're pushing even has.
Yeah, the cart has a place for your drink, yeah.
So it is actually. Well, but it's at Mariano's and Whole Foods. It is available, so it would not be anything different for Doms.
So in pulling aboard, Trusty Shank?
Yes.
Trusty Tackle? Trusty Markworth?
Definitely, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make it unanimous. We'd like to see you go forward here.
Thank you so much. We look forward to coming back in front of you. And again, seriously, would love to have you take me up on my offer.
I will probably.
Come down and visit.
Refresh my memory, it's about 2,700-something North Halsted, right?
Yes.
Somewhere near, okay, yeah.
Do you have a card or something?
I've got lots of cards.
Yeah, check out. Yeah. We'll definitely.
I'll go ahead and I'll share with your staff, and we'll go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Next item is discussion about animal control. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm here tonight, I'm joined by Sergeant Courtney Blau. Sergeant Blau is one of the shift supervisors that works primarily evening shifts and fortunately was on duty in the evening of November 18th when the village encountered quite an unusual incident. And that matter caused us to reflect on the status of village code and Illinois law, and we wanted to come and talk with the board. It's something that the village attorney and I have talked about a little bit. So in essence, we found ourself, we found ourself working with the owners of an animal called a African serval cat, S-E-R-V-A-L, which is a wild jungle cat from Africa that some people from time to time decide to import or breed and try and raise as pets. Our evening that night encountered quite an experience with this animal. Unfortunately, the animal perished after it was out free for about 2 hours and 50 minutes, at least 2 hours and 50 minutes, that's the level of police involvement, as the owners recaptured it. And I think we all agree that's a bad outcome. But my concern is the outcome could have been worse than that. And upon reflection or review of the state of Illinois laws, we've learned that it is, although prohibited to sell or trade or breed, that it is although prohibited to sell or, or trade or breed, it's not prohibited to actually own one of these, uh, animals in the state of Illinois by state law. Uh, when we looked at our village code, frankly, the village attorney and I found that it, uh, probably is, is, uh, lacking in this area. Nothing in the village code currently prohibits possession or ownership of one of these animals, um, in the village. And so, as a result, we, um, looked at other villages that had more, uh, contemporary, um, uh, language, reflecting and restricting the ownership and possession of wild animals. Um, and we presented that to you here, um, in, in the report for discussion's sake. So, uh, I wanted to provide a brief overview. Um, I know some questions I've been asked that I can probably answer, well, I can't answer, but, because we don't have the answers. We don't know how long, uh, this particular owner had this animal. We don't know how old the animal was and, um, we don't precisely know what caused its death. Uh, I, I'd like to kind of explain that I thought Sergeant Blau and the other people that were working that night did an extraordinary job in difficult circumstances. But, uh, it was the owner, um, of, of actions of recapturing or capturing this animal, trying to control it, trying to get it back to its enclosure at its house some distance away. The animal was very panicked, very freaked out, um, as you can imagine, a wild, uh, cat. We're talking about an animal that's 35, 40 pounds and stands about waist-high, uh, springing and jumping and doing all of those things and, and, uh, uh, again, it's unfortunate it, it didn't, uh, it didn't survive, but it, it wasn't any overt action on the part of the owners as they were trying to, um, you know, rustle this, uh, this animal back to its enclosure. So, um, it's unfortunate, uh, and I want to make clear that police officers never handled the animal. Frankly, I, I don't blame them. I mean, this was, uh, and it, and it certainly could have ended up, uh, worse than, than it did. So, we wanted to present that. Maybe I'll pause there, um, see if anything the attorney wants to clarify or maybe we just open it up to discussion or questions from the, from the board.
That was a good description. What we're looking to do is tighten up the code in terms of, uh, defining what a wild animal is and creating prohibitions for keeping wild animals. Then, on top of that, creating a procedure whereby these animals would have to be safely removed from the village upon notice to the police department that, uh, they're, they're being held in town. So, we provided, uh, sample language. Uh, the chief described the reason for it. Uh, we think, um, this code language is, uh, appropriate, some form of it will do the trick. Uh, so with that, I, I think questions would be appropriate at this time.
Comments or questions from the board on this? Trustee Markworth?
Looking at the, the point of, uh, wild animals, um, uh, referred to as a monkey. I, how is that compared to a wild animal? I know some areas don't. I know, gosh, in Florida, I've known people that, uh, that's one of their pets. So, um, this is a cat that, uh, to be honest is, uh, I would consider a wild animal. But how do you verify, uh, the point of a wild animal?
If, um, if I could call your attention to the language that we've, uh, suggested that we, we were able to pull from, uh, another law, it specifically, and, and perhaps it'd be helpful if I just read it to, uh, um, in, into the record, this, this is, uh, the recommendation is, uh, defining a wild animal is any species of mammal, reptile, amphibian, arachnid, or fowl which is not naturally tame or gentle but is of a wild nature or disposition and which because of its carnivorous in its wild state or is poisonous or because of its size, physical makeup, vicious nature, or other characteristics would constitute a danger to human life, domestic animals, or property, including raccoon, squirrel, lion, tiger, leopard, oslet, jaguar, cheetah, serval cat, margay, mountain liar, link, mountain lion, lynx, bobcat, jagorinda, and other wild cat of the family, felide, hyena, bear, wolverine, badger, wolf, coyote, boar, alligator, crocodile, or any poisonous or venomous biting or injecting species of amphibian, arachnid, or reptile, or any life-threatening reptile. Any animal which is of a species listed specifically shall be considered a wild animal and any poisonous, venomous, biting, or injecting species of amphibian, arachnid, or reptile, or life-threatening reptile shall be considered a wild animal. And the provisions of this chapter regarding such wild animals shall apply. I'd like to specifically point out, this is not trying to define, um, geckos and iguanas and constrictor snakes or, um, the, the, the non-poisonous type of, uh, um, you know, pets that people might raise, frogs and other reptiles. It is specifically trying to deal with things that are vicious, poisonous, or, or otherwise a risk if they get out.
Sounds pretty comprehensive. How do you enforce something like this? Like, if, like, if someone says, hey, I think my neighbor has a wild animal, would you get a search warrant?
The, the answer to that is yes. So we, we would, we would get a complaint. Uh, the chief would reach out to the, uh, individual who was complained of and ask, and ask for, uh, permission to, uh, to, do you have this type of animal? Can we see the animal? If the answer's no, we can't, of course, go on, cannot go on the property. We'd have to get a, an administrative search warrant from the court. And get a court order for removal.
If it was physically in their house or was outside, how would you even know? Because they couldn't define it from afar.
It would have to come from a complaint of someone else. That, that's the, that's the language that's proposed.
She'd absolutely do it. I was just wondering.
Any other municipalities have something like this in place locally? Who would that be?
Yeah, we, we, we copied this language pretty much from Bartlett, which, uh, updated theirs in recent years. We find a variety of different language, um, in different municipalities. Ours seems to be dated because it defines to a lesser extent wild animals, but then it doesn't prohibit them.
I think the, the definitions are going to have to be very specific here, wild versus domestic, I think. Because there's, you said fowl, I mean, there's birds that are wild. People have exotic birds that are, can be defined as wild, possibly. And I just don't, you know, when the neighbors start telling on other neighbors and then search warrants are executed for, uh, potentially just a misidentification of an animal, I'd be very concerned about that.
Well, again, the, the definition really seems to take in, uh, it takes in dangerous wild animals.
But that's an subjective term, though.
Well, I, you know...
Do you think the guy, I mean, I'm not arguing with you in court here, but it's like, the guy who owned this cat, do you think his cat was dangerous? Probably not, but obviously we knew it's not, it was not a good situation, so...
So there are certain animals that are specifically prohibited. Those that are not specifically prohibited that are deemed wild, there would be a, a determination made by a court ultimately based on experts, uh, and such, uh, that would help determine whether or not that is a wild animal, that is dangerous. Uh, I, you know, this really is designed to address the animals listed as well as those that have threatened, uh, human life, uh, domestic, uh, animal life, those types of occurrences.
How many calls have we probably, you know, I understand something for a dog. Uh, but have we had, uh, calls in this village for particular, uh, dangerous animals?
Other than this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, this, I would not say this is any level of widespread problem. Um, this, this really stems from something that we were unaware of until it became a real problem and a dangerous problem. And, um, what I'm asking for the board to consider is, how do we prevent this from occurring again? Um, these particular owners have an enclosure they've invested in. We don't know that they're not planning on going out and going through this exact same exercise thinking the enclosure is good enough. And, um, and my concern is that the, the next such incident, a wild African cat running through town may have worse results than, than this one had. And so, that, that's why I think it's prudent to take a measure to, in, make a decision, inform the community of that decision, so people don't go out and think, well, this is such a neat, such a neat type of animal to have. No one has one, I'm going to be the first one in the block to have one, and they really don't know what they're getting into. Uh, and we have no capability of safely trying to, um, capture an animal like this. Uh, we, again, it's unfortunate this animal didn't survive, but I'm, I'm certain there could have been worse outcomes on this evening.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
Of course, sir.
Who is the officer sitting next to you?
Can you repeat that, Mr. Mayor?
Who's the officer sitting next to you?
Yes, sir, this is Sergeant Courtney Blau. Courtney was in charge and managed this incident that night and, uh, be happy to have her give some more color to the board if you'd like.
Yeah, could, could we hear that?
Thank you. Um, yes, on that Saturday night, we received a phone call from a resident living in the Gross Point Boulevard neighborhood advising that they saw what they believed was a bobcat. And they advised that this animal had chased another neighbor who was walking their dog. It chased them and their dog and cornered them, uh, and that they were eventually able to get away. Uh, while we were on the phone, while dispatch was on the phone and we were heading down there, they said that they were going to keep an eye on this animal while officers were en route. And then the animal started to approach them and they did not feel safe, so they went inside. When our officers got on scene, uh, because of probably the distance of where it was and probably because not being familiar with what a serval was, because a lot of my officers were not familiar with it, they actually did think that it was a bobcat. Uh, we took a photo of it and we sent it to the DNR and they advised us that it was actually a serval. So we did a little bit of research on that. And I can tell you from my standpoint, when I saw this animal, I was absolutely intimidated by it. It was very large, it had very long fangs, and it was hissing at us. Uh, it was running between homes. We were able to corner it at one point and we were able, we had Lake County Animal Control on their way to, uh, to assist us with trying to capture this. We didn't know, um, the level of what their service could, could be to help us, so we had dialogue about what was the danger of this, like what was the threat level for the residents in the community. And so we had a dialogue about whether or not we needed to possibly put this animal down, but we were also taking into consideration the safety of the residents because while we were out looking for, trying to stop this animal, we would have people coming outside because they were seeing us. We had to yell to them to go back into their homes because we didn't know the level of threat other than it was hissing at us. We then, uh, found out that it could actually jump over very large fences and it was actually going into people's enclosed backyards. So we also didn't know the danger that it was going to pose for other people's animals in the backyard because everybody, some people let, let their dogs out. Uh, so we were able, while we were, uh, while we were out there, we had other people say, yeah, I see it's right over there. And we're like, okay, please go back into your home. And then we did see another couple running around with food in their hand and it looked like they were looking for this animal and we confirmed that it was the owners of the serval. And what we had learned was they believe that their dogs had let it out of its enclosure, out of a gate, um, becau, while they were away. And so that's probably why the timeline, because we were out there for two hours and 50 minutes until we were able to capture it. We could not get close to this animal as it was, uh, hissing at us or it was running, like, through backyards. The owners said that the one owner, the female owner, could possibly be able to pick it up on her own, but when she would get close to it, if she grabbed it, it would hiss, growl, and jump out of her arms and run away. So, we felt that they, because it wouldn't let us get anywhere near it, but it was letting them get close enough to it, that they were able to try to use our catch pole to capture the animal and they were eventually able to. And then we were assisting them to, we brought it, helped them bring it back to their home in our CSO vehicle, our Community Service Officer vehicle.
And, and you mentioned it's hissing. What would you say the, the, the level of intimidation? You used the word intimidation?
Absolutely. It, it, it made me feel very nervous and I was very apprehensive to try to get close to it or approach it. Um, we actually, when we did approach it, we actually did have our tasers out to possibly, uh, to gain control of it in case it tried to attack one of us. But, yeah, absolutely, very intimidating, hissing, growling, um, just, it, it, very, very large. Imagine, like, it was the size of a dog, but, uh, looking more like a, an African lion, like, not like a leopard of some sort is what it looked like.
And the citizens you encountered?
Yeah, they were definitely, they were definitely concerned as well. They were worried for their safety, especially the ones, uh, the neighbor that called us, the resident that called us in saying that it had walked towards them and they want, they went inside because they didn't want to be near it. And again, encountering the other neighbor where it chased the other neighbor and their dog and cornered it and then they were able to somehow run away from it.
I'm curious, did you have any conversations with the owner's neighbors? Were any of them ever aware that this animal existed? Do we even know that?
We did not have any, uh, conversation with the neighbors, no.
There, there is, uh, quite an enclosure inside the, the rear yard of, of the owner's, uh, house. Um, I, I, something else that I worry about, I want to share my worry with the board is the consequence, not only the risk that this animal posed to domestic or people while it was loose, um, this easily could have resulted in us having to dispatch this animal. And although we could look at that fact pattern and say it was necessary and justified, there's a lot of people that love animals, I love animals, that aren't going to understand that. And they're going to want to know why we didn't tranquilize it and do all these things that really are things of the movies. And I'm really, I'm really relieved we didn't have to do that. But I am concerned if we, I'm very concerned if this becomes, um, a repeated, uh, i- issue. That's a very real possibility that we'd have to do that out of defense of ourself or, or someone else and, and, uh, that could be ugly, I think, so...
You know, um, you also have to keep in mind, you know, an adult brings us into their home where there may be a small child, the child didn't get to choose and if something happens, if they look at, you know, sometimes you see dogs that maul the children, you know, this is just increasing that risk, so, yeah, I have no problem with adding this to our code.
For the amount of, uh, of no complaints, I think it's something that we should go forward with. You don't know, and, uh, sometimes the bad news of something happening.
Yeah, the preemptive action, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, but I think also too, um, the publicity of this animal being shown, uh, sort of gets me to the fact that, jeez, I, I'd like one of those. So, uh, I would have considered this very much.
Well, this is always one of those situations where you're going to get criticized either way you go. Um, they had a similar incident in Chicago with a, a large cat and they had to, um, they had to take care of that, they had to put that cat down. And it's always the case of, if you put the animal down, everybody will tell you, why didn't you wait until you tranquilized it? But if while you're waiting for somebody to tranquilize it, it harms an individual, then those same people are saying, well, why didn't you put it down? So it's a, it's a, an absolute no-win situation with Monday morning quarterbacks. So it's better to, for us to try and prevent this in advance.
Thank you. That's, that's my advice is it, it, it is a no-win situation, so let's try and avoid a situation and there's probably places in this country where someone could responsibly own a serval. Uh, my suggestion is it's not in suburban Vernon Hills.
So I'm curious, your first inclination was to use your taser versus a gun, huh?
Yeah, we were, we, we were thinking that that would, for safety purposes, in case of residents coming out of their home, I'm very much so concerned about the safety of the, of the neighbors and I didn't want to put anybody else at further risk. Yeah, because we had, when... Yeah, because we had, when we were there with, with the taser out, we were with Animal Control, and they had their catch pole, trying to loop it around the neck, and we had the taser in case it somehow broke free or tried to attack someone.
Geez, the taser, what if it jumps at you, that thing doesn't work? You need the T-ten.
Good point.
You're saying I did these in the wrong order?
Yeah, you did this in the wrong order.
The serval's why we need the T-ten.
We need to order more.
Could have hit that thing from 45 feet, you know?
Exactly.
Monday morning quarterback. Don't do that.
Yeah.
So if there's consensus, then we'd, we'd be looking for direction to draft an ordinance and bring back to the board in January?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, anybody?
Nope.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to Officer Blau for her courage.
Absolutely, for sure.
Not many can put that on their record.
Yeah.
I was hoping for, but it was a very interesting story, and a lot of people did not believe what we actually encountered.
Okay.
Who else, who was the other officer?
So it was myself, we had a Community Service Officer named Lon Palowski, and then I had four other officers with me, Officer Fink, Officer Scott Hill, Officer Marquina, and Officer Rodolusian. We dedicated that much manpower to try to make sure that no one got hurt on this call.
Yeah, good.
All right.
And Mayor, they, they really did, they, they do all deserve compliments of showing courage and, and caring of a wild animal. It's not the animal's fault, it's, it found itself in Vernon Hills in November, right? It's, and, and they all were trying to balance that, that care of the animal, as well as the, their own safety and the safety of the public, so compliments to the entire team.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so you have your direction in order? Okay, all right? Yeah. And, okay, then, there's nothing else on the committee agenda, correct? So we need, what, a motion to adjourn to go to closed session for land acquisition? Is there a motion to that extent?
Motion to adjourn.
And go to closed session for land acquisition?
Second.
Motion a second. A roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Tackoaka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Protam Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned, and we'll be going to closed session, and not conducting any business the rest of the evening.